Our Commissioners Briefing Meeting is in order. Thank you all for being with us today. Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the agenda for the briefing meeting today? Are there any other items people would like to add to the agenda for our briefing meeting? And are there any questions about any items on the agenda for the regular meeting at 5:00? All right, great. Then we're going to consider this the agenda for our meeting today. And we're primarily focused on an update on Educated and Capable Strategic Priorities. So Rachel Nygaard and Corinne Duncan, I think, are going to get us started today. Thanks for being with us.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Corinne Duncan. I'm the Director of Election Services, and I'm here with Rachel Nygaard. She's the Director of Strategic Partnerships. And we represent two of five departments that are contributing to the Educated and Capable Community Work Group that we'll be updating you on today. And though there are some places where we can have a direct impact, you'll see that the county's largest contribution is through investments and through funding, especially of K through 12 education. So once we go through our initiative updates, we'll dive into some education statistics. Rachel and Max Tainter from Strategy and Innovation have gone above and beyond compiling this information to help us understand the education landscape. In addition, we're very lucky to have with us here some experts, Dr. Jim Cosby from Asheville City Schools Interim Superintendent, and Dr. Rob Jackson, the Buncombe County School Superintendent. They've joined us here today to deepen our perspective and hopefully open up the conversation for what the schools are doing and what their challenges are. I think that you'll find this presentation informative and stimulating, so we suggest holding questions to the end if possible. And we have a lot to cover, so let's dive in. Our agenda today, if you'll go to the next slide. Our agenda today, I will begin, and in an effort to be concise here, I'll be presenting for all of the departments that are contributing to the Educated and Capable Work Group. Oh, thank you. And I am not the expert, but if you have questions, we will get those answers for you, and we have some of those experts in the room with us. So we'll first start with a strategic plan check-in. And we'll go through updates from all of the departments, and it will go over a broad lifelong learning perspective. Then we'll do the education review, and we will move in age order, so from start from kindergarten, then third grade, through higher education and career readiness. Then we will take a look at the education outcomes in our community, the data piece, and then we will move on to our education partners, Dr. Cosby and Dr. Jackson, to hear from them. Again, this is the Educated and Capable Community Work Group. The strategic vision here is a county where all residents thrive and demonstrate resilience throughout their lives. Again, this is a lifelong learning philosophy. The goals within this group are four. One is to increase kindergarten readiness, increase third-grade literacy, improve college and career readiness, and protect our older residents' ability to age in place. There are five departments contributing to these goals. That's Public Libraries, My Department Election Services, Health and Human Services, Justice Service, and Strategic Partnerships. The structure for each of these department updates will be an introduction of the program, some graphics, and then how we're doing in each department. So we're going to start with the Public Libraries. Their goal is being achieved through the Preschool Outreach Program, or POP. This program offers regular storytimes, storybags with extension activities and puppets, as well as book crates. And the initiatives within this goal are to increase the quality and equitable access of the services. In FY22, POP served 109 classrooms, providing 218 storytimes, circulating 188 storybags, and delivering 507 book crates. POP staff also performed ongoing equity audit of the offerings continually. These are some images of the services that the libraries are offering. And this is a graph, and you will see the same format for each department, of the orange line being the target and the blue being the actual data. So here, the libraries are doing well towards achieving their target of serving 150 classrooms by 2025. And you'll also see two themes throughout the presentation. One is that your investment in staffing is paying off. There's a newly created POP specialist position here that's supporting this effort. And you will also see that COVID has a significant impact. So here in FY22, you can really see the difference between FY21 and FY22. POP suspended all book deliveries during COVID. So that's the libraries. And here is Election Services. This is my department. Our goal is to increase high school participation in the electoral process and expose students to a career in local government, especially elections. And we will do that through two initiatives. One is to educate on an election's career path and participation in voting, and then also expand the Student Assistant Program, which is a state program that allows 17-year-olds to be poll workers. We have partnered with Buncombe County Schools, as well as the Asheville City Schools, through this program. And our target is not being reached. So in FY21, we had 12 students participate in the program. And then FY22 was the midterm primary, the one that happened this last spring. The election was moved from the original date by three months to a day where school was in session, so we had no participants for that election. And then FY22, we were able to get five students for the general election. And I really think that we can reach our target now that we have an outreach team, so we can formalize our outreach program, and I really think that we can reach those goals now that we have the resources we need to do that. Health and Human Services. So this is looking at our elderly population, and you've recently been briefed on this goal. So we'll stay high level on this one as well. There are many programs that contribute to this, and the idea here is to consolidate that. So developing an active aging center is the main goal here. Federal funding, state funding, county funding, and aging services providers are all contributing groups to this goal. And we are in partners with the Age Friendly Buncombe County towards this idea of an active aging center. There was also a full-time Adult and Aging Services Program Manager supporting this project. So again, we're seeing investment in staffing paying off. This, we're going to spend a little bit more time on data here, since it's outside of K through 12. But the comparison here for understanding how aging adults are faring in Buncombe County is the AARP Index Score. And there are several categories within this score. And we see that housing, environment, and engagement, we're above the national average. In neighborhood, transportation, health, and opportunity, we're either at the average or below the average. Engagement, which is what we are the highest at, are categories such as broadband cost, speed, opportunity for civic involvement, the voting rate, I'll take credit for that one, social involvement index, cultural arts and entertainment institutions. So we're doing well there. Environment, that's drinking water, air quality, roadway pollution, pollution in general. And then housing, that one might seem surprising in this climate, but this housing is specifically about things like zero-step entrances, availability to multifamily housing, housing cost burden, availability of subsidized housing. So it's likely that the retirement communities are contributing to keeping that score up. We're lower in neighborhood, which is access-related primarily. So that's grocery stores, parks, libraries, access to jobs by transit, those sort of things, crime rate, vacancy rate. And we can go into more details into each of those categories if you would like later. Justice Services is our next department contributing to this work group. And these goals are contributing to the career and college readiness for middle school and high school. And the goal here is to reduce youth involvement in the justice system. So the two initiatives here really focus on research and network and investment. So here, we're developing partnerships to prevent involvement in the justice involvement and support alternative pathways for justice. This group is also reviewing and allocating Juvenile Crime Prevention Council community investments. United for Youth for Asheville-Buncombe, School Justice Partnership are two groups that are contributing significantly. This department also hired, whoops, got myself out of order here, I'm sorry. This group also hired some supplemental staff to help with the efforts for the Justice Services Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. The data here is a little bit different than the charts that you have been seeing as you want the blue to be below the orange in this case. And that's not what we are seeing here. Again, the trend for FY21, COVID was a drastic drop, and that was because students were learning remotely. So there was not a lot of reporting for FY21. Then when students went back to school, we see a big spike there. And there are many contributing factors for why that is happening. This chart here also incorporates Buncombe County Schools, City of Asheville Schools Charter, and private schools.
Could you pause for a quick question on that? Can you clarify what qualifies as an offense?
I think we might want to have... So a school-based offense is an offense that occurs on school grounds, school property, including buses, at a school bus stop, or at an off-campus school sanctioned event, field trips, athletic competitions, et cetera, or where the impacted party, the victim, is a school, such as a false bomb report. School includes any public or private institution, including elementary, depending on the year and the age range of the juvenile justice jurisdiction during that year, secondary, 9th through 12th, or post-secondary, community college, trade school, college. If the person who the complaint is being filed on is under 18, but it excludes homeschools, preschools, or daycares.
And it rises above the disciplinary level of what could be handed at the school? Is that the...
It's at the discretion of the administration of the school-based resource officer as to when, how to respond to behaviors. And so unless it's a certain mandatory reportable offense. And so some of the lower-level things are at the discretion of the individuals involved in the incident. And then there are a number of mandatory reports.
Thank you very much.
So as a general rule, that would include anything that's referred to court, anything that's diverted from court, anything that reached a level of in-school suspension, as well as more formal court process as well, or are those two separate?
These are specifically school-based offense complaints that are filed from the schools to refer to the Department of Juvenile Justice Court Counselors. So the court counselors may dismiss the case, they may divert the case, or they may approve the case on for court.
But all of these are DJJ-involved at one point or another?
Yes, all the intakes, all the school referrals that the court counselors review. It's the equivalent to charges being filed in the adult system.
All right. And the last department is Strategic Partnerships. And these goals span K through 12. And since Rachel is the Director of this department, I will let her review these, and then it will segue nicely into the K through 12 education discussion.
Great, thank you. Rachel Nygaard here, Director of Strategic Partnerships. Our department also supports the education goals within the county's strategic plan, and we do that primarily by stewarding community investments, rather than through the delivery of services. You can see there are several funding initiatives listed, two of which are education-specific. So that means everything within the early childhood education grants and the education support funding is targeted toward this. We also have other grant programs which include some education funding, where you may see in Strategic Partnership Grants or in Tipping Point Grants, some education-related funding. Here are some of our learners from early childhood through high school. Countywide, so not specific to only the Strategic Partnerships Department, but countywide, we have $106 million worth of education investments in K-12. So we've narrowed this down to K-12 to be focused for the particular slide. This figure does include the amounts passed both to the school systems through local current expense, as well as funds that are passed through the public school systems to the public charter school systems. We supplement our annual general fund allocations with some additional education-related fund investments through one-time ARPA, the American Rescue Plan Act COVID Recovery Funding Investments. This funding countywide supports 37 different organizations, community-based organizations working in the field of education. And the work that they do is diverse. It's everything from after-school programs, arts education, career exploration, college access support, literacy programs, STEM programs. There's a lot of work being done by our public and our nonprofit partners. And we track performance metrics for each project that gets funded. And they report back on things like how many students did they serve and how many professional development hours were provided, and things of that nature. But when we look at data at the community-wide level, we want to pause before we get into the data slides and set the stage with a comment about collective ownership. So we know that no single organization and no single system can take responsibility for the educational success of students in our community. And while we contribute more than a quarter of the county's budget toward education each year, you heard earlier, the amount of direct services that we deliver is smaller than in some of our focus areas on the strategic plan. It takes the collective action across all sectors and collective ownership across all sectors. Two examples that we'll call out that we participate in as collaborations, one is mentioned already, the United for Youth Network. That's spearheaded by the United Way as a backbone organization and has participation from the school systems and many different partners from students themselves and families and other community stakeholders who are engaged in student success, coming together around a shared community goal and shared accountability to try to accomplish that goal. And then on the statewide level, we're part of a broader network called My Future NC. And both of these partners and data sources were helpful in compiling this information. We will look at a few different data measures and performance measures that you heard Corinne describe earlier and that are listed here on the screen, starting with a snapshot of enrollment, and then looking at outcomes from kindergarten readiness through high school graduation. And as we go, we want to take that community-wide look, use a community-wide lens. So not only the public school systems, but where we're able to get it, we want to include the charter data, homeschool data, private school data, to really see how our students in our community as a whole are doing. We are using a lens of COVID impact. That is something that you'll see on every data slide that we stop on. And we're using a lens of equity, particularly looking at race and ethnicity, which we'll spend a little time on at the end, once we run through some of the other information. The primary data sources for these, for those who are following along, are listed on the screen. And I do want to acknowledge and thank the public school systems, both Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools, who are in data collaboration with their teams, which was very helpful in getting this information together for you. So we begin with a look at the total population of students in Buncombe County and which type of school they attend. There were almost 39,000 students in Buncombe County kindergarten through 12th grade for the 2021-2022 school year. Nearly 23,000 of these students, or 59%, attended Buncombe County Schools. Over 4,000, or 11%, attended Asheville City Schools. So that's a combined 70% in public schools. Charter schools represented 8% of the population in their six schools, and we do have definitions and information about what constitutes a charter school, if you would like that info. And as you'll see later in the presentation, as we go, charter schools tend to have students that are less economically disadvantaged than some of the public schools. Also of note here is homeschools representing 13% of total enrollments in our community that year. And we have information, again, about what homeschools are defined as. One note about that is in the recent legislation, homeschools can include learning cooperatives. This is a look at the enrollment over time by school type. The number of students overall, which is the number above the chart, has increased slightly over the past four years, growing about 2.5% or just shy of 1,000 students across the years that are represented here. During this time, charter schools in yellow have grown from an enrollment of 23, 25 to 29, 93. Homeschool enrollment also grew during this time. There was a spike in the, you'll see in the green, there was a spike in the 2021 school year, presumably due to COVID, which has returned to a lower rate, although it is a slight net increase. Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools have had a net loss of population, 3% and 2%, respectively. The first year of this table, public school enrollment comprised about 75% of all enrollment. And in the most recent year, it comprises about 70% of all enrollment. So here forward, we will look at the data, including both public schools and charter schools where it's available. Most of the data that we will look at doesn't tend to be available for private and homeschools. We begin with kindergarten readiness. We're holding this meeting on the same afternoon as the Early Childhood Committee had its meeting. So three of the Commissioners here participated in that session. And that's a group that really focuses in on this data and looks at it more deeply. But I'll do a high-level overview for this presentation. So a quick intro about how we measure kindergarten readiness. There's a lot of info on the screen, but essentially know that we're using an assessment called NC Eli. It's now used in, it's done in cooperation with the State Department of Public Instruction and used in both of our local public school systems. And while the overall assessment has 16 different objectives in it, there are seven that are considered to be core objectives, as defined by the Department of Public Instruction at the state level, that address the requirement for screening early literacy, math, and language. As of the current school year, 65% of kindergarteners demonstrate readiness, which is the definition of meeting or exceeding four or more out of the seven core objectives. So the majority of the core objectives, meeting or exceeding. This figure is rebounding from a low the prior year of 58%. Again, likely as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. We are not yet back to the 68% baseline that had been set the first year that NC Eli was available. So we looked at kindergarten readiness, and now we move on to math proficiency. So this is the next high-level education performance measure that we will look at, which parallels reading, that we'll look at in a moment. In this case, math proficiency is measured by using the End of Grade, or EOG, mathematics assessment, which begins in the third grade and carries through the eighth grade. So this is third through eighth aggregated. Looking at this chart, one of the first things that stands out certainly is the gap for the 2019-2020 school year. When the data does reappear the following year, when schools returned after that first year of COVID, you can see a significant decline in math proficiency from previous years. Asheville City Schools on this chart is in orange, and Buncombe County Schools is in blue. We've tried to carry those color schemes through for your ease. You'll see that they both had declines. And then the following year, the 2021-2022 school year, the numbers similarly to what we saw with kindergarten readiness began to rebound, however, have not reached pre-pandemic levels. We've included here a gray bar, which is the state of North Carolina, demonstrating that overall the state experienced similar trends and demonstrating that, on the whole, we tend to be at or above that state average. I'll also add that this is not only a state trend, it's a national trend. When we looked at the nation's report card, for example, we saw that some information that they had seen the largest declines in math scores, since their initial assessments had begun in 1990. Reading proficiency is the next performance measure we look at. And this looks very similar to the math proficiency slide, and it's calculated similarly. So it's based on End of Grade English Language Arts Reading Assessment, based on the North Carolina Standard Course of Study for third through eighth grade aggregated to show an overall snapshot of reading performance. All systems for which there is data met or exceeded the state average. However, like we saw with math proficiency, we see significant declines correlating with the pandemic. So now we've moved past the eighth grade into the high school phase of the data. And when we look at college readiness, an indicator that we look at at the community level is ACT. This is a standardized test that's administered for all 11th graders. It covers four academic skill areas, English, math, reading, and scientific reasoning. And the data we will look at demonstrates the percentage of students And the data we will look at demonstrates the percentage of students that earn a composite score of 19 or above, a composite score across those four areas. And the reason we look at that is that's what's determined to be college-ready in our state. It's the minimum ACT score that would be required to be considered for admission into one of the University of North Carolina system. When we looked at math and reading, we saw that students in our community typically performed at or above the state averages, which is also the case with ACT data. This is a snapshot from the most recently available year, with 65% of charter school students, again in yellow, 59% of city school students in orange, and 47% of Buncombe County Schools students in blue, attaining that score of 19 or above. Past 11th grade, now to high school graduation. We look at graduation rate, which is based on sort of graduating on time with their class or a four-year cohort population. And here we do have information for city, county, charter, and private schools in comparison to the number of graduates from said schools. Quick note that in our county, while we do have six charter schools reporting data for the overall presentation, only two of them go all the way to 12th grade. So this, there's a very small number of graduates overall in those percentages. But the overall graduation rate in our community for the most recent year is 90.99, so about 91% in comparison to the graduation rate for the state of North Carolina, which was at 86%. Here's a look at the information over time. Graduation rates are trending up for charter as well as public schools, with the most dramatic rate for charter schools. But you heard me mention, with a small number of graduates, small tweaks can really change percentages more drastically. And for this, we don't have the ability to trend the data for home or private schools. Okay, so in addition to academic-specific data, like test scores and graduation rates, there are a few other performance metrics that help give a more complete or whole picture of student success. And attendance is one of these. I've seen it presented as percent of schools that attend school regularly. Here, and the information that we have from the public dataset shows chronic, chronically absent. And there's a definition of chronic absenteeism, which is included here, which essentially boils down to students missing 10% or more of their enrolled time within the school. This is information that's aggregated for all grades, K through 12. We see a dramatic increase in chronic absenteeism over the past two reported school years, presumably due to COVID. The 10% is regardless of reason, excused or unexcused. So when we think about the impact of quarantines and illnesses, isolations, certainly, we understand that there would be spikes.
Rachel, can I ask a clarifying question on this data? This is, this is telling me that almost 30% of Buncombe County Schools enrolled students are missing at least 10%?
That's accurate.
Of the required days of school?
In the 2020-2021 year.
Okay.
It has dropped back down. In the year following, we don't yet have data for the current school year, and we can rely on anecdotal information, as well as maybe anything the school systems are able to report more contemporary. I won't spend much time on the discipline data. This, again, is part of adding that holistic picture to student success. Hannah shared some great details about how this data works. On this slide, referrals to law enforcement equates to the information that she had shared previously. We've also included short-term suspensions here. It shows a five-year trend for suspensions, as well as those court system or law enforcement referrals. And for the ease of comparison, this is displayed as a rate per 1,000 students. It's a lot of data to take in on one slide. One thing that stands out is that Buncombe County does tend to have higher rates, Buncombe County Schools, than Asheville City Schools. And you'll see, when we look at some of the demographics of students that are enrolled, other information that may contribute.
Rachel, before we move on, I am curious, do those suspensions factor into chronic absenteeism data?
I, so I think the answer is yes. A suspension is considered an absence. I got a nod from a superintendent, so I feel good about saying that.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
It's regardless of the reason. Unless it's an in-school suspension, which does not count as an absence. Whoa. I'm gonna have to just awkwardly go back, and it's kind of weird. It's a preview of where we're headed next. Okay, this is where we left off, which is when we transitioned to look at some of this information by race and ethnicity. We won't spend a lot of time on each slide, but want you to see that we have this information available disaggregated by race and ethnicity. And first, we will look at the enrollment, where it's available, which, as you have seen, the most readily and reliably available data is for the public school systems. We don't have complete data about the demographics of our charter students, not all, not all charters report. So we didn't feel like we could include that. The way that race and ethnicity data is recorded in the Department of Public Instruction data is that there's no duplication, only, a student only is in one category. So white, black, Hispanic, Asian, or other, which is a composite of American Indian, Pacific Islander, and Native Hawaiian. So a couple of things stand out. While we are a majority-white community, with students of color representing about 30% to 35% of the population, there are differences in the demographics between the school systems. Asheville City Schools has a greater percentage of black students than Buncombe County Schools, 20% compared to 7%. But keep in mind, scale, the number of black students in Asheville City Schools was 841, compared to 1,495 in Buncombe County Schools in that same year. Buncombe County Schools has a greater percentage of Hispanic students than Asheville City Schools, 21% compared to 9%. And the actual numbers are displayed here on the screen. That's, and if you're looking at the number of Hispanic students in those two school systems, it's 4879 compared to 389. I'm trying to carefully just press it one time. Okay, economically disadvantaged is a category that is reported to the state by both school systems, based on the definition that is on the screen. It is not the same as school lunch program. Essentially, economically disadvantaged students can be eligible for the National School Lunch Program or other public benefits, like SNAP, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Program that's sometimes referred to as food stamps.
Rachel, is that broken down by race by any chance?
We, it is not here, but that is something that we can make notes of and bring back.
That would be really helpful. Thank you so much.
I'm saying that we'll go look for it.
Try.
Okay, so just quickly, Buncombe County Schools has the highest percentage of students fitting into this category, almost half, followed by Asheville City Schools and charter schools with just under a third. This is not a trend, this is a snapshot point in time, and can be pretty volatile. As we were in discussion with our school superintendents in advance of this meeting, they both looked at school lunch enrollment for the current year and can add some kind of, some more context to that. These next slides don't take into account the economic disadvantaged status, it's race and ethnicity. The data, when it's disaggregated in this way, demonstrates that not all children are experiencing the same rates of success, and that starts when they show up to kindergarten. You'll remember when we showed you this kindergarten info earlier, we said 65% of kindergartners met the readiness threshold on NC Eli. However, of the 156 black kindergartners assessed in this year, it's actually the current school year, 52% were at or above that readiness threshold, and for Hispanic kindergartners, it was 51%, which is roughly a 20 percentage point difference from their white counterparts. We also see differences by race and ethnicity in math proficiency. White students outperform their peers, the third through eighth grade, students of color. Here's the slide for reading proficiency by race and ethnicity. We previously told you that 55% of Asheville City Schools and 48% of Buncombe County Schools students overall were at that proficiency level. And when we disaggregate the data by race, we see, for example, in Asheville City Schools, 13% of black students, and in Buncombe County Schools, 21% of black students demonstrated that level of reading proficiency. Whereas for white students in those school systems, those percentages are 75 and 57%, respectively. Here is the ACT score information. White students are displayed on the far right, and there are pronounced gaps. Students in the Asheville City Schools, there's 64 percentage points between white students at 76 and black students at 12%. In Buncombe County Schools, the gap is also significant, yet not quite as wide. White students at 55% and black students at 25%. Only about 1/3 or less of Hispanic and multiracial students attained the score of 19 or above. Asian students, while fewer in actual number in terms of representation in our school systems, did attain the highest percentage of the categories, at 78%. And there was not a significant enough population of Asian students in 11th grade in the Asheville City School System to include that data. We have graduation rates, which show similar trends. Black and multiracial students have lower graduation rates in Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools. White students graduate at a higher rate. We also have included in your packet the absenteeism data by race and ethnicity. And the discipline data by race and ethnicity.
On the absenteeism data, just to pause for a second, to make sure we're interpreting it, so let's look at the Asheville City Schools data. The percentage refers to what?
The percentage? The percent that met the chronic absenteeism definition, which is 10% or more.
Right. The percent of, for instance, with white children, 20%, 20% of all the absent, all the kids who meet that threshold of absenteeism, 20% are white?
No. Of all white students, 20% were absent at that threshold, to meet chronically absent.
So of all black students, almost 50% are reaching the threshold of chronic absenteeism?
If you look at the Asheville City Schools for this one particular year, yes. About 5 in 10 black students met the chronically absent threshold, and about 2 in 10 white students met that definition.
Thanks for bringing it down.
I know we were told to hold questions, but do we, do we know why? What are, what are the specific factors into that?
Let me summarize.
There's gotta be more to the story than these numbers.
I'd like to offer some summary and then share the microphone with our guests, who can add some, some depth and additional information. I do want to say that where we started in terms of this collective ownership, we know that no single organization or system can be responsible. And we think about what we, as county government, what is our role in trying to impact this? So you may remember, almost two years ago, the Board of Commissioners voted to sign on to the United for Youth Network partnership. And as part of that, we had a partnership agreement where we went through an exercise of saying, what's our part in trying to help move the needle in education? We committed to prioritizing it and delivering and coordinating services, sometimes directly related to education, sometimes associated, like affordable housing and food and nutrition. We committed to being a funder, to budget, budget our annual general funds in support of education, including the various ways that we do that, to promote equity through systems and policies and practices that support equity for everyone, and to provide that collaborative leadership, which is really about what we're doing here today, is setting the stage, having this community conversation and forum for the questions on your mind, Commissioner. This data really represents a snapshot of information that didn't speak to causation, what led to this. And the data doesn't answer the question about where we go from here. And so those are, those are the questions at hand for us as a community and for us as a county government, to figure out what actions we can take to create better outcomes for our students. So with that, I wonder if you would be good with me passing to Dr. Cosby and Dr. Jackson, and then coming back for questions and discussion, or if there's anything that you specifically want me to answer before we switch? Great, thank you.
Good afternoon. It's a real pleasure to be with you. Let me thank you for this opportunity for both systems, and I know Dr. Jackson will do the same. In addition to being interim superintendent of Asheville City Schools, I've been a resident of Buncombe County for the last 19 years and got to watch you in action. I was doing lots of things in other places during that time, so I tried to stay as anonymous in Buncombe County as I could. The last eight months has gotten beyond that. Seems like I make the news about, once, at least once or twice a week, so I'm taking a little bit of the heat off of you when, when it comes to me. But what I've watched over that period of time, and so, not only as a citizen, but as an educator, is what you as a board, the action and the priorities that you have set, and I've been very impressed with those. I want you to know that both ways. Your emphasis, the kind of thing you're doing right now, looking at education and making it a priority, is fairly unique in North Carolina and across the country. There are some counties doing it, but very, very few that are doing it to the depth that you're doing it, and to the intensity that you're doing it, and with the commitments that you're making to back that up. So we very much appreciate that. I've been in this role, interim role, for, for eight months now. I've been in this role, interim role, for eight months now. It's gone very, very quickly. Most of my jobs, so this is my sixth interim superintendency. When you go into an interim superintendency, it's usually because there's some kind of an issue. Because if a superintendent's been there thirty years, and everyone loved them, and they're retiring, they've got time to hire someone before they retire. So usually it's a situation where they've been fired, or there's some really big issues. And my interim job is to come in and try to put things back on some kind of an even keel, and get people liking each other again, and talking to each other. So that's been some of my role in Nashville City Schools this year, repairing some damaged relationships. And I want to say how much I appreciate your county manager and the great cooperation that I've received from her and from all of your staff. It's just been wonderful. I've enjoyed it very much. And also trying to, especially this year following COVID, all of you have read about the issues with staffing. We've experienced those same issues, just like every school system, probably everywhere in the United States. We may not be quite as bad off as some others, although we have a large number of openings. Still, most of the folks that I talk to in North Carolina are worse off than we are, much worse off. In fact, I talked just a couple of weeks ago to a superintendent in a mid-sized system in North Carolina, who has a fairly significantly large high school. And at that whole high school, he had one certified math teacher, one. He had a middle school that had zero certified math teachers. So we're dealing with those kinds of issues. We're also dealing with the issues of students returning from COVID, having been away, some of the questions about absences, those kind of things, that's a big piece of it. Some of the numbers that you saw from twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, that's when kids were out of school, when different things were going on. So those statistics really don't mean much. The statistics prior to that and the statistics after that do. And we're pleased with some of the things that we see. We know that we have a real job to do in Nashville City Schools, working to close the achievement gap between African-American students and our other white students. It's a big gap. But I also would try to put that in context for you, to say that it's an issue in every urban school system in the United States. And I've worked as a consultant in many of them, I've worked as interim superintendent in many of them. It's an issue everywhere, and it's because of a number of factors. And of course, most of it goes back to poverty, and you know that, that's nothing new. It's just like when you look at the state report card and school scores, they correlate perfectly with poverty. And when you're trying to raise proficiency, it's a slow process. And there are things you can put in place to make it happen. You have to have a school board and a superintendent that demand those things, that set those as priorities. You then have to inculcate that belief in the whole system. You have to constantly get people to understand and believe that, yes, all kids are very capable of learning at high levels, and you've got to try to bring in programs that involve the parents and the community in helping you do that. It's not a secret in how you do it, it's just putting all of those ingredients together that can make it happen. And I think we have some of those going in the right direction. I know Buncombe County does also. So those factors you need to consider as you look at how soon you can move it. There's a real opportunity right now going on with our state superintendent and state legislature in looking at the accountability system in North Carolina and how you grade schools. As most of you probably know, schools get either A, B, C, D, or F grade, based upon two factors. One of those factors is proficiency, that's how many students perform as proficient on state tests. The other factor is a growth score, and those are weighted. Proficiency is eighty percent of the score, growth is twenty percent. And I believe every educator that you would talk to would tell you, of those two, the most important one is growth. And when students come into school behind to begin with, the only way you ever get them to proficient is to have high growth, where you have to grow them more than a year to be able to eventually, at some point down the road, to get them proficient. So it's not a very fast process, it takes time to do it. That formula needs to be adjusted, hopefully that's going to be done this year, to put more emphasis on growth. I am happy to report that our test scores last year, and looking at the growth factor in our African-American students, we had the highest growth ever in Nashville City Schools. And I believe that's because of some of the programs that have been put in place, the emphasis now on a really good, solid English language arts curriculum, a good, solid mathematics curriculum, getting ready to adopt new science curriculums and social studies curriculum, and also the training that goes on as a piece of that. You've heard about letters training probably, you've heard about the science of reading, that is really, really good stuff. And our teachers are going through that this year, and we're getting, seeing good results from that. It's frustrating to many of them, because it's almost like getting a second master's degree on top of whatever you're doing, plus doing it at the same time you're having to teach every day and be prepared. So it's been frustrating finding the time that was necessary for that training, and that's a piece of it also. The other thing I would share too, it's been one of our biggest challenges, and I think most school systems are dealing with it, are the mental health problems that we're experiencing. Not only in our students, but mostly in our students, but also in staff members. We have more help probably ready and available for staff members than we do for students. But that's been a real focus with us in Nashville City Schools this year, especially when it comes to the services that we provide within the school day and the students. We're seeing more of what I would call real difficult behavior, behaviors from some students, some students who just don't seem to fit into a group setting anymore, don't want to, more acting out, more physical acting out, more verbal acting out, the kinds of things that make it very difficult sometimes for teachers to control a classroom or teach. We are donating a significant portion of our ESRA funding to that purpose this year. Just to give you an example, we have nine schools. Every elementary school and middle school in Nashville City Schools has a full-time reset room. If you don't know what a reset room is, that's a room where children can go when they just can't stand where they are. And we have, those are staffed, we have them full of equipment like punching bags, bicycles, whatever it takes for that child to be able to get it out and to reset themselves so they can go back into the classroom. We also have, in every school, elementary, middle, and high school, we have mental therapy experts in every one of those. We're doing that through our mental health agencies, we have a total of thirteen of those folks who are working in our schools now. Most of that is ESRA funded, and those funds are going to be drying up, and those are an area that we may come back and say to you, we need some help with. So that's kind of what we're experiencing. I don't have a lot of answers for you, because it takes a good year going into a school system to really in-depth find out all the issues and what you're dealing with. But we have a Board of Education, as you know, we have five new board members, they're wonderful people, they're educated, their belief system is that they really want to tackle these problems. Their biggest job right now is finding a new superintendent and getting someone on board, hopefully around July one. But I've enjoyed the experience here, I've enjoyed getting to know many of you already and listening to what you're doing, and we so very much appreciate all you do. And after Rob speaks, if you have other questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Superintendent.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. County Manager. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to enter into this incredible conversation. I'd like to reflect back to you first, my great appreciation that this is the conversation being held by our Board of County Commissioners. That's rare in my experience in our state and beyond, that our county commissioners are really diving into this level of detail to understand the issues and obstacles our children and families are facing, and really taking a look at how the county can be a convener of the partners that exist across the community for all of us to tackle the issues ahead of us. And so I certainly want to say thank you for that. As an aside, I also want to share my appreciation on behalf of our Board of Education. I know that later today, you'll be considering the school calendar resolution, again, an opportunity for all of us to come together to consider what's best for our students and families. I apologize for not being able to be here for that portion of the meeting, we have a town hall meeting in the North Buncombe District, so I'll be there with parents and community members this evening. It's a bit difficult to follow Dr. Cosby, if there were a Mount Rushmore of superintendents in North Carolina, he clearly would be on that Mount Rushmore. He is a paragon and a hero for educators across our state, and certainly one of my great heroes, and I appreciate the opportunity I've had to work with him. I'd also like to very quickly mention that Mr. Rob Elliott, who's on our Board of Education, is also here this afternoon, and I appreciate his presence. Again, thank you for this conversation. One of the things that is absolutely demonstrated and illustrated in the data that's just been shared with you is that there are gaps in achievement in our school system and education. Our goal is that each and every one of our students graduate from high school on time, prepared to be successful, prepared for whatever pathway lies beyond that high school experience for them. And so certainly, we continue to work through that. I appreciate the questions that I heard earlier, as the Commissioners rightly noted, the congregation of the disciplinary data and the attendance data. We know that when a student has been excluded from school through out-of-school suspension or not able to attend school, that they're missing, not just being in school, but missing high-quality instructional opportunities. In addition to that, over the course of the last couple of years, as you're very well aware, and as was referenced earlier, we had students who were quarantined from school or who were sick and not able to attend school, and certainly that impacts our attendance data as well. But we are very clear that when our students are not face-to-face with our incredible teachers, their instructional progress suffers. And so certainly, to the credit of the school system, I'm now entering my fourth month and quite excited to do so. When I had the opportunity to speak to the Commissioners before, I shared with you, I'd visited all forty-five of our schools, and it was my intention to spend a full day in each of our schools. So far, I've spent a full day in twenty of our forty-five schools, and so hopefully by spring break, we'll have spent a whole day in each of them. And I've been very impressed in all of our classrooms, as our teachers and instructional staff are working very hard to meet the needs of each of the students individually. The school system, prior to my arrival last year, recognizing the same achievement gaps that you've noted, the same gaps in the over-representation of certain groups in our disciplinary data, spent some time dedicated very closely to really owning and understanding the data, to the point that they brought in the Hunt Institute to provide professional development and provided internal trainings, so that the school system, teachers, educators, administrators, really could dive deeply into implicit and explicit bias in our practices. That work continues today, as the school system is working hard on our system code of conduct. We hope to have that work finalized by the end of this school year, put into practice for the new school year. The new code of conduct contains more alternatives other than just exclusionary practices. So we're looking for opportunities to keep our students in class, even as we're working through the behavior that got them in trouble to start with. Part of that code of conduct is pairing interventions with consequences, so supporting the students so that they're not likely to repeat that behavior. I mentioned having the opportunity to spend a day in all of our schools, and one of the P L C meetings, which is professional learning communities, where teachers come together to disaggregate the data and talk about the data. I was in one particular meeting when a teacher said something very simple, yet incredibly profound. The teacher said, "Behavior is communication. Behavior is a form of communication." And so we recognize that when our students act out, they are communicating something to us. And so we've been working hard to sharpen our understanding of what's being communicated to our teachers, to our schools, to our community through that behavior, so that we may be able to address the needs that are there. Additionally, the school system, Buncombe County Schools, has been working on what's been termed Behavior 411, which is training for our educators around that communication that occurs through behavior, but also to create small triage groups of behavior specialists who go into our schools to observe specific individual students where need has been present, to add to the capacity and the strategies that the school team, the school-based team has, to help equip our educators in each of our schools to be able to meet those needs. As we continue in this school year, we're certainly seeing ongoing consequences of the pandemic. We understand our students away from the support structures of schools for a significant amount of time, particularly during their developmental years, continues to manifest itself in some of the behavior we're seeing. One of the sharpest increases we're seeing in terms of disciplinary acts, or acts that lead to some sort of disciplinary action, is the incredible increase we've had with vaping and vaping issues from elementary through high school. Sometimes those vaping issues, including THC and other issues, and we've been somewhat surprised, we know that, for example, with vaping, if a student is excluded from school for suspension, they may be likely to go home and vape some more. Vaping is an addictive behavior, and so certainly that feeds the behavior as opposed to help create a situation where they may move away from that behavior. And so certainly, that is something that we're seeing today and working hard on. In convening partnerships, I do want to take just a moment to acknowledge and thank our partners with the United Way. One of the things that they worked on was the creation of what's referred to as learning circle or learning circles, which puts together information from four areas, attendance, behavior, academic information, and mental health supports, to help suggest ways for our schools to support the students. And so as a convening agency, the county commissioners bringing together this opportunity for partnerships is certainly something we've been able to lean into and leverage. And so we certainly appreciate that and appreciate our partners like the United Way and all of our many partners who help us in this work. I'd like to, for just a few moments, kind of reference, as was mentioned earlier in the presentation, the data presentation, the largest subgroup in our school system in Buncombe County Schools is our Hispanic population. Now, not all Hispanic, all students who are members of the Hispanic population are English learners, or what back in the day was referred to as E S L, English as a Second Language, then became English Language Learners, then English learners, now referred to as multilingualistic. But regardless of the state classification of a group of students who English is not their first language, we have seen an increase in that population within the Hispanic population, and the school system has worked very hard to provide access to a rigorous, common curriculum that's equitably distributed across the county to make sure we're providing the support that those students need. One of the service models we use is our dual-language program. We have a dual-language program in each of our six school districts, eight currently this year, and with the growth into our intermediate schools, we'll be at eleven next year. As we continue to work with that group, I would just reference that just since we returned from the winter holiday break, we've enrolled an additional thirty students who do not speak English. And so that's a growing population for the school system, and certainly a population that continues to need our support and our growth in supporting them. Our schools are all working very hard on high-impact strategies and understanding how we might be able to improve our core instruction in the core subjects for all students, because again, our goal is that each and every student in our school system graduate on time, prepared for success. And then if I might, I was extremely excited when I first looked through the goals and I saw the strategy around kindergarten readiness. I am absolutely personally and professionally convinced that the greatest lever to making a difference in student outcomes is in early childhood. Our kindergarten teachers, on the first day of kindergarten, can tell you the first day the students who were involved in a high-quality four-year-old program and the students who weren't. We saw it in the numbers earlier. I grew up in Buncombe County, I'm quite proud of that. I attended kindergarten at Beverly Hills Baptist Church, because at that time, kindergarten was not a part of the public school system. Today, in two thousand and twenty-three, we can't imagine public schools without kindergarten, we're a K-12 system. My hope, my dream, my goal is that pre-K or pre-kindergarten become universally ubiquitously available, that we have universal access for every four-year-old child in Buncombe County to a high-quality four-year-old program. I believe that's our greatest opportunity to make a difference in a lot of the achievement gaps we see, when we see our students coming in significantly behind some of their peers. We recognize anything that we can do early is certainly helpful, and we look forward to being a part of that work and doing our best to be great partners in that work. I was asked about... I was asked about the social-emotional needs that we're seeing in our students in Buncombe County Schools, in our school systems across the state, certainly in the school system I was serving. As we were in the midst of the pandemic and imagining life post-pandemic, we believed that we could predict a greater need for social-emotional support of the mental health of our students. I don't know that anybody was accurate in that estimate. I believe we underestimated the great needs. Certainly, those students that we might have said pre-pandemic would probably need some social-emotional support, continue to need that support. But students across economic groups are really in need of that support. We're seeing behaviors that are not typical, we're seeing needs in families that are not typical, and certainly, we have used, as Asheville City Schools has, our ESRS funding that's been available to ramp up our mental health supports, and sustaining that support is going to be one of our great challenges moving forward, particularly as we see where our students are and our families are. Too often, we've heard parents kind of rub their hands together and say, "I just don't know what to do with my child." And we've got to be equipped to help parents, as they do everything they can to support their children. Again, thank you so very much for this conversation. Thank you for convening this great group, and certainly in joining my friend and colleague, Dr. Cosby, as well as county staff. Be happy to try to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Jackson.
So Chairman Newman, passing back to you and to the board for any either discussion that you all would like to have, questions for presenters, information or direction that you'd like to provide to staff, as we have with other strategic plan focus area meetings. We can leave and gather additional information and come back and continue the conversation going forward, but the rest of this time is at your discretion.
Okay. Thanks, Rachel. All right, Commissioners, great presentations, everyone, staff, folks from the schools, great job, lots of really interesting information. So I know that was, putting this together is, you know, a lot of work. So thank you for everything that went into this, really substantive presentations. Commissioners, questions, any follow-up questions?
I do have a question and a comment. I wanted to follow up first on Dr. Cosby's comment about the growth within the Black Students in Asheville City Schools. I was chatting with him beforehand and mentioned that at our budget hearing from the schools back in May, Ashley Michelle Thublin had presented to us that some growth data, I was actually able to find the slide, of the 14 tested areas last year, Asheville City Schools' Black Students experienced growth in 13 of the 14 areas. I feel like during our budget presentation, I think that glossed over due to a myriad of factors at the time, but that was up from eight of 14 to 13 of 14. So just wanted to say thank you for addressing that as part of your comments to us, but also did not want that data to get glossed over again, that I think you are starting to see some significant improvements in addressing the achievement and opportunity gaps within...
Thank you very much for mentioning that. I did mention just quickly the kind of growth that we saw, and it was really significant, I would have mentioned it. So it really made our staff feel very, very good about the direction that we're going with that. We know we have a lot of work to do there yet. We know how it's done. It's a matter of getting everyone together to do it. The answer is simple. It's just a lot of extra help and a lot of extra time, and everyone focusing and believing. And that takes everyone being on the same page, and that takes some work to get that done. So I'm sure, Rob, you can get on and say...
In the words of my daddy, what he said.
Actually, while you're up there, Dr.
I thought he was going to talk about me being his daddy. And I thought when I was first sitting, his slides appeared, I'd be much more appropriate to talk about the old folks piece of it than I was about the education piece of it. Yes, thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you, Dr. Cosby, I appreciate that. And Dr. Jackson, while you're there, I do have a follow-up. I'm curious, as you're talking about the code of conduct, the behavioral challenges that are experienced within our students, and we know that's happening everywhere right now, I am curious, when you look at the social-emotional learning aspects, within the behaviors, how are you addressing those so that they're not punitive and disciplinary toward the student as part of your code of conduct?
Absolutely. So Dr. Shane Casta, who's our Director of Student Support Services, is here as well. And one of the things, or one of the ways that he's really kind of described the work is the system is setting up guardrails. And so we want to make sure that a consequence is not too heavy-handed, and a consequence is not without consequence, so we change the behavior. And so within those guardrails, though, we give the administrators the opportunity to really look situationally specific at what happened, so that we can find out if there was a communication happening through that behavior. But the big piece, though, is pairing the consequence with the intervention, whether that's more time with a counselor, or time with a mental health therapist, or having the opportunity to use, I believe you called it a reset room, we certainly have rooms like that in our schools as well, so that working with and through our counselors and our student support team, we're trying to meet the needs of the student while also encouraging them not to engage in those misbehaviors as well, because we certainly want every single parent who sends a child to Buncombe County Schools to know that they're sending their child to a safe school. And so when there are misbehaviors, there has to be some sort of opportunity to help a child not reengage in those behaviors, so that we can continue to have safe places for our students and staff.
Thanks. I won't monopolize.
Let me just comment also, we're doing similar. We redid our code of student conduct this year. We changed the name of it. We call it now the Code of Student Success, which is a much more positive spin on it. It also does the same kind of thing, identifies the different kinds of issues, it sets parameters, it gives a series of consequences, from milder to harsher, for a first offense, a second offense, and so on. And I think our principals have found it very effective. I know you live with one of them, he probably talks about it every night. But they, I think they have felt really good about the results that we've gotten from that. It's very firm, but it's also very fair, and it's very, I think consequential, to look into positive things for students. But there are just some times that you have to do some things that no one really wants to do, and it allows that also if necessary.
Thank you both, I really appreciate that.
Okay. I was going to ask a wonky data question, but, which I think is for Rachel. You know, I'm staring at some of this, some of these bar graphs around proficiency in math, or proficiency in reading, or the absent students, chronically absent students data points, and it's really showing us this disruption over the pandemic that sticks out dramatically. I guess I'm just, I'm looking, I'm hoping for, looking for a, some other data point that we can look to that shows that things are improving. I know it's only across two fiscal years, I can't count in academic years. You know, is there a data point around, I don't know, kindergarteners to second graders that we can look at?
Yes, we have like readiness ones coming in. We were very pleased that those numbers are up this year. We will have test results. Now, we'll be doing mid-year kind of diagnostic kind of tests, and we'll have that data to see. And so far, we think that that will show improvement, but you'll have to wait till the end of the year to really get those other pieces. We believe that the, we can give you numbers like what percentages are of absenteeism right now, and we're running right now in Asheville City Schools, about 92% of our students in school every day. And that's a fairly normal, and that's up from what it was before. So that's returning more to normal, and we're pleased with that. But that also, we've run into times this year that's been lower, because we've had bouts of folks with COVID and flu and RSV, and you know, all the viruses that are out there, excuse me. And when you have that, you have a lot of folks out, in fact, you don't want them in school. You know, I've been out twice myself. I had COVID once, they didn't want me around. My wife didn't want me at home either, but she had to put up with me. There are times that you don't want them, so those numbers right now are really difficult to say what they mean and what they don't mean. I think a lot of the absence this year is more of an indication of illnesses and viruses and sickness, and those kind of issues. And we've had it not only in students, the same thing in staff. You know, I know one day at Asheville High School, if I remember, we had something like almost 30, 30 staff members out, all of them with COVID or flu or whatever. Now that is letting up now. You know, had a real hit with it right after Christmas, but it's beginning to reverse itself now. So I don't know how much real confidence we can put in all those numbers that we've seen those couple of years that we're out. They're real suspect.
I appreciate your question, Commissioner, and will admit that the information we included in here is sort of the headline, high-level measures, and there are a lot of opportunities to go into more depth. So for example, in kindergarten entry, we showed you the entry assessment that gets administered within the first couple of months of a kindergartener's experience. They also have what's called M-class, which are assessments that happen at the beginning, in the middle, and the end of the year. Same with each of the sort of phases of a student's participation in school, where we may have course, course-level grades that tell a part of the academic picture, we might have grade-level promotion. So any of those areas, if you're curious and want us to come back and bring more information, you can certainly articulate that now and/or anytime, and we can dig deeper.
Thank you. I'll start and say thank you for all the work that you all are doing, particularly when it comes to the intersection of school and justice. Your task is something really unique in addressing this in a trauma-informed way, addressing the multiple mental health and best services, safe schools approach here, and I don't envy y'all having to navigate what that looks like day by day. I guess I'd be curious to continue to track and really just be more of a listener in terms of what efforts we can make and how we keep track of taking that individualized approach that you mentioned with your great staff, and Dr. Casta included, of folks who are looking at every individual case to determine what's most appropriate for each student, while also balancing consistency across the board, because it inherently is this subjective kind of assessment for what we're doing here, which is needed, but also makes it hard to track across all metrics of, did this person who had this specific issue get the same service or treatment? Different needs, different situations, so I'd love to keep that conversation going and find out who needs to be at the table for that, because truth be told, it's the intersection of mental health meets court system, just so many people to get in the room, and while we're here, we might as well do it, right? I'm joking about that, not right now.
I do, we do actually, on a monthly basis, look at the different kinds of disciplines being done to see if there is consistency, and then we share that among our staff, and the principals talk about it, and share with each other what they were doing in certain kind of situations. And that doesn't necessarily make it always fair, but we're trying to make it consistent, if we can, as much as possible.
You know, I would like to thank you for our staff, for the information that everybody has brought before us, but I've got to be perfectly honest with you. As a Black man, I'm appalled at what I see when I look at the numbers. You know, I've been on the commission now for seven years, and every year, the schools come before us, and every year, we hear the same song. We spend over $100 million a year. Go and look at other counties in the state, would love that, in the state would love to have the funds that we spend for students. So it's no question that Buncombe County is committed to our students. But my concern is what's happening with both school systems. I just don't see the results. I just hope and pray, I've got three, well, counting this year, four years left, and then I'm off in the sunset, but I want you folks to do me a favor, surprise me, and come forward with some numbers that'll show that we're doing a little. You know, sure, the numbers are up some, but gosh, when they're as bad as they've been, you can only go up, it's hard to go down anymore. But I just hope that I will see something that will impress me, and it's not only, I remember a conversation I had with Dr. King eight months before he died. He was talking then about the have and the have-nots in this country. And when I look at those figures in public schools, it's not only the Black and Brown kids, but it's also all the kids that have that, the poor white kids are suffering just like that. But now I'm beginning to see, after seven years on the commission, of why a lot of people in this country are down on public schools, because they see the money, the billions we put in public schools, but we don't get anything out of it. So please, I just plead with you, surprise me before I go off the commission and show some good results, because I honestly, I'm going to be honest with you, I don't think you can do it.
Commissioners, other questions? All right, gentlemen, thank you for being here. Thanks to all the members of your team and the county staff for giving a really substantive presentation. You know, we are just beginning the budget process for this year. We know that the past several years, and still, the schools are in a very unique environment right now, coming out of COVID, and hopefully transitioning into something that has a lot more feel to normalcy to it. But we know it's still, although the schools are doing in-person instruction, that the effects of the pandemic and the disruptions to schools, that all those effects are still are very much being felt in the way the schools are operating today. So thank you for all that you do, thanks to all the members of your teams, the educators, we really appreciate it, and look forward to taking the information you've shared today and working with you over the coming months, as we go through the budget process, to make, I think, a lot of difficult decisions. You know, there were, it was a very tough time during the pandemic, but there was also a lot of resources provided, and those resources are not going to be here long-term. So we've got a lot of important priorities to set around what we keep and what are the most important investments for this period of transition, but also just thinking about what are those high-impact areas where we really can make a difference on these important issues, including the ones that Commissioner Weiss I just talked about. Like what can we do to really, to really move the needle on some of these issues that are not easy to do, but which is really our job to do? So thank you all for being here, and we look forward to working with you in the months to come. Yeah. All right. Rachel, anything else on this item? All right. Okay, well, Commissioners, that's everything that was on our agenda for the briefing meeting, so we will adjourn and we will reconvene for the regular meeting at 5 o'clock.